As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present and that can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Todd Corain.
Present.
Ronald Brooks.
Somebody's calling in now.
Duarkesh Nalan. Oh boy. Let's wait a couple minutes, see if it's Ron calling in, or Duarkesh. Otherwise, we don't have a meeting.
Another caller just called in.
John, it's Ron Brooks.
Okay, I'll call your name, Ron. Ron Brooks, you're here?
Yeah.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner Adam Bernard.
Here.
Staff Assistant Rachel Pressy.
Here.
Good evening. This is the open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, June 28, 2022. Now called the order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, and extended on June 16, 2021. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening in person and by remote access. The public can join the meeting remotely by telephone call 1-312-757-3121, and enter access code 133-747-477. Or the public can join via computer at gotomeeting.com/join/133747477. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note, this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here in the audience recording tonight's meeting? Being none. According to those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please rise and join us in the salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All supporting materials have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down a line of members, inviting each by name, provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and into the microphone in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without risk being granted by consent. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. First on the agenda is applicant nine, St. Mark LLC, requesting site plan approval under section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an expansion of an existing light manufacturing facility at nine Mark Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, map 58, parcel 44. Is there anyone here representing this project?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Feist with CMG Engineering. Also with me tonight is Mr. Jim Glickman, the project applicant.
First, may I have a motion to open the meeting, the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Aye, John Regan, as an aye.
Duarkesh is on the.
Duarkesh is in? Duarkesh, you're here now?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I need a vote from you, too. Is that an aye to open the meeting?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Okay, please continue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I'm presenting the project at number nine, St. Mark Street. I'll just point your attention, I guess, to the boards. I'll just sort of give you a brief overview of the project, and then I'll open it up for questions. The project's located off of St. Mark Street, which is an industrial park area off of Route 20 in Auburn, in close proximity to Ponville Pond. This figure here just shows, you see the existing building outlined in pink, is the existing industrial facility. The site, existing conditions, it's currently occupied by an existing industrial building. It's occupied by a company called Corrosion Metals, where they do fabrication of metal materials, you know, for shipment to various industries. The existing building has two entrances with approximately 11 to 12 parking spaces on one side. They have another access on the other side of the property. The current driveways allow tractor trailers to enter the property and actually drive through the building to drop off and load materials, and then exit the other side of the property. The site's located in an industrial zone. There's also wetlands on the property on either side, which shaded in green. As you can see, the 100-foot buffer zones on each side. Notice of intent was filed for the project, and the Conservation Commission recently approved an order of conditions for this particular project. In addition, the site's located in a groundwater protection overlay zone as well, which required a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. That permit was actually obtained and also approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals at a recent meeting as well. So tonight, we're here to present, the applicant is proposing, in addition to the existing building. And our site plans submitted to the board shows it's a basic 11,200-square-foot addition on the project on the southern side of the building. You'll see the expansion of the parking to also accommodate the increase in impervious building area. We're proposing 25 spaces. I believe 22 are required under the zoning bylaw. With that, there's some additional turning area and impervious area on the property. There's no, in order to basically accommodate the expansion of the existing manufacturing facility. The site layout is fairly self-explanatory, but I guess I can pause if you'd like to answer, ask any questions about the site layout at this time, or if you'd like me to move on to the utilities.
Ron, do you have any questions?
I'm all set, John. Thank you.
Duarkesh?
One question, maybe I might have overlooked it. The height of the, the new addition, is it the same height as the existing structure?
That's a good question. I guess, Mr. Glickman?
Did you go to the microphone? He can't hear you on the call.
Sorry about that. The addition section will be a little bit lower than the existing maximum height of the existing building.
Which one has the peak roof, the new one or the old one?
The existing building will have, has a peak roof, and the addition section will have a sloping roof from the existing.
Yep, like only two roof?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions, Duarkesh?
No, no question.
So, are you keeping the design where the tractor trails will enter from one driveway, proceed through the building, and then come out the other side?
Correct. Yep, yeah, the new addition will accommodate that as well.
And have you done auto-turn analysis to show that the tractor trailers can make those turns?
Yes, I believe, yes, we have.
Can you provide those to us?
Yeah, if they're not already in the package, that is something we can provide.
I didn't see them. Thank you.
One question I do have is, I didn't see any place for snow storage. Unless I'm overlooking it.
If you look at the plan, it is noted on the layout plan along the perimeter. I know near the front entrance, you'll see it's labeled "snow storage" off on the grass area in the lower right corner.
What sheet is that on?
Sheet C4.
Oh, C4, I don't see it. Oh, I got it, okay. That's enough to carry the whole parking area?
And if not, I know under Mass. general laws, if snow storage exceeds a site in larger storm events, they are required to take it off-site if necessary. And I believe that's part of the long-term operation and maintenance plan.
Okay. On the bollards, it says that the, you know, for the safety bollards, it says that the architect will pick the color, the color will be safety yellow, and never any other color, but safety yellow. And then, between your sewer manhole and your drain manhole detail, you have two different manufacturers for the castings. I was kind of wondering why.
That's something I don't know the answer to, but I could definitely find out if that's a concern.
This is ours, it's not yet, it's something I care about. It doesn't exist. That's all the questions I had off the top of my head. Oh, no, wait, hang on a second. I believe your paving showed eight inches of gravel, and it's required for 12. That's industry standard.
Yep, and we can, 12 inches, we can provide for gravel. I will also note, the project has been submitted for peer review to Graves Engineering. However, we're still awaiting their comments. Haven't received them yet.
That's what would be my next thing, it's got to go through Graves' peer review or wherever else was chosen. So, we'll wait for their review. Hopefully, by the next meeting, you'll get their review and be able to address the comments, and we can proceed from there. Anybody have any else, any questions?
Any doubt?
Would you like to continue to our next meeting, uh, of July 12?
Yep, that's acceptable.
May I have a motion to continue this hearing to July 12?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it. Second?
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Duarkesh?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Aye, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. Next on the agenda is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next on the agenda is applicant, The Rocky River Realty Company, requesting a special permit and site plan modification under section 3.2.7.0 and 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for earthfill and warehouse storage at 7 and 12 West Tech Drive, Auburn, Mass., 01501, map 27, parcel 20, and 23. This is being continued from our June 12 meeting. Is there anyone here representing EverSource? Oh, hi, Todd.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
If you have something to present, go ahead. We only have a couple of questions.
I don't, but did you do a motion to open the public hearing?
So, you're open?
It's continued hearing.
Continue.
Okay, sorry. I was in the restroom before. So, just to rewind a little bit, we were here before, probably four, maybe six weeks ago. We did receive Graves Engineering peer review letter. We went through a process of exchange with them. They've issued a revised, updated June 23 letter, which I don't think really leaves us with any open items. They noted the waivers that we requested, landscape architect stamp, and landscape up against the, the building. And I think, you know, just left some of those items for your discretion, that they typically do. Other than that, the plan set was, was updated and submitted in, I believe, in, in early June. So, we're looking to just update. Any, any comments, questions that you might have, answer any outstanding items. If you want the engineer to go through those changes that were made, we can do that, but I think they're addressed in the letter.
Very well addressed.
Okay.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions? No, okay. Ron, do you have any questions?
John, the only question, I was reading through the Graves review, is, I wanted to ask, is there a fence around the detention pond?
That I don't know. Is there a fence surrounding detention pond? I believe there was in the first plan.
I don't believe there was.
Yeah, this is different. I'm a civil engineer for the project. There is a commodity on, on site.
Four-foot fence, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ron?
I'm all set, thanks.
Duarkesh, do you have any questions?
Hey, John, I have three questions. These might be quick, I think. The first one is on the driveway opening, so that was updated to 36 feet. Now, since this area or this site requires large transportation vehicles, would that 36 feet be sufficient, or do we have to go with 55 feet?
The driveway width is sufficient. Transformers are the large pieces that will be delivered to the site. They will be taken off, actually, the overland truck semi, and put on what is called a hold offer, which is basically those platforms that have just dozens of wheels, and they can spin on, spin on their head. They gave us the criteria of 80-foot space, which is why we've got 80-foot clearance around the door. And then, yes, we've got the extra wide 50.5-foot driveway to get the hold offer around the corner. The width of it to go through the gate is probably only like 14 feet wide, and we just have to turn it around that corner, and that's why we've left 50 foot there.
Well, the review said you went from 50 feet to 36 feet wide on the paved surface with a 44-foot gate.
Yeah, that's correct. We did, the plan that was reviewed originally was one iteration of a very wide site plan. Even after that was committed, we had gone down to what we found out was the maximum of 36 feet. And that seemed to work. It actually worked much better with the geometry of a rolling gate, too.
Does that satisfy your question, Duarkesh?
Yes, that's, thank you, Jeff, for that. The next question is on the, I think, one of the item 24 from Graves' list of questions or comments. That was about the abutting property owner. They, I mean, the suggestion was that we might, even if, even if the abutting site is operated by EverSource, it might be good to have consent from the abutting property owner. And maybe this is a question for Adam and the board. Do we need to get a written consent from the abutting owner, even if, in this case, it's operated by EverSource?
I don't think so. Being the same owner, they're all separate parcels. Something the future may change, but I think that would be something good.
Chair, can I just ask a question? Is it the, I understand EverSource operates both, but do they own both parcels as well?
Yeah, so Jeff, maybe you can confirm, but I think the parcel that's referenced in that, in that number 30, excuse me, comment 24, I think that's relating to the former FedEx facility that was turned into the EverSource office slash training building. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The site to the west is owned by and operated by EverSource.
Right. So, it's really, it's really almost like a campus. It's not separate, you know, distinct entities owning and operating these.
Got you. Any other questions?
Oh, is Duarkesh done?
Duarkesh, are you done?
One last question, John. This is on the, the storage itself. So, I understand that transformers will be stored here on site, and, and as I think Jeff and the folks know, the, the NERC requirement would want it to have, I think, the oil, the oil should be filled for these transformers. Since there is oil storage on site, are there any additional requirements that need, that need to be met, or are they already covered?
I, I believe in the first meeting with, with this group, that is going to be a sunken unit within the building to store the transformers in. It's going to be epoxy coated, there is no drain. So, if there's a leak in the transformers, they can pump it into the proper barrels on site and get rid of it. So, nothing can get out from the building into the ground, or on the road, or anything like that. Am I correct, Todd?
Yep, and Jeff, you might be able to weigh in, but I'm fairly certain there's an operation and maintenance, you know, plan, and probably a spill prevention plan in place with regard to this site and this, this operation.
Yeah, that is correct. We, the transformer oil and the real oil have been accounted for. We've got a very deep sump with reels are that more than adequate to hold the storage of any of the oils come out of these containers. I think we only need a few inches of that sump there, and we're a foot or so, so we've got excess capacity over what was required as well.
You do have a sensor that tells you if there's oil on the floor, if there's a leak, up to a couple inches.
Jeff, are you familiar with that, some sort of alarm?
I do believe that was incorporated into the, the building plan. That is something that's required, that's certain, and on that. But there's no site type alarm, anything leaking with the inside and contained within the building. You are correct, there's no drains that it could get into.
Anything else, Duarkesh?
Nope, that'd be all. Thank you, thanks.
Yeah, so my only question remaining is, comment number 30 from Graves, dealing with the public sidewalk that's existing. Post-construction, you plan to just put in turf seating instead of restoring the sidewalk? Is there any reason why you cannot restore the sidewalk?
When we were looking at that, the sidewalk does not continue on the south side of the property, and knowing that it would get pretty well destroyed during construction practices, we did not propose putting it back because it essentially was not going to go anywhere. So, if that is a requirement or recommendation by this board, I'm sure EverSource would be more than happy to put that back.
So, I can't speak for the board, I'll only speak for myself. I would prefer that you put the sidewalk back. I believe that we should be putting in sidewalks and restoring sidewalks that are damaged from construction on all places possible, as part of the town's mission to become more walkable in our Complete Streets policy.
So, there's no problem restoring the sidewalk?
I don't believe so, right, Jeff?
No, there's no issues that we could put it back from the civil side, and I, I don't know if there's an EverSource reference tag, but I do not think that would be any issue whatsoever to just throw that back on the plans and get that in there.
Thank you.
We have not decided whether or not to give them a waiver on it. You haven't, we haven't?
Haven't.
I don't think so. So, according to this review from Graves, the landscape plan needed to be stamped by a landscape architect. They have asked for a waiver. I don't have a problem with it, but I think we got to vote on it as a group. So, all those in favor of not requiring a landscape architect stamp on the plan, say aye. Ron?
A motion.
A motion.
Aye.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Duarkesh?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, aye, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. Next up on the request for a waiver is the design engineer responded that a waiver has been requested for exempted from the foundation landscaping due to the pavement's limits being determined based on turning movements of large transportation vehicles, and the area is not open to the public. The understanding is the Planning Board will address the waiver request. I don't have a problem with it. Does anybody else have any questions or a problem with us granting that waiver? I'm not asking for a vote yet, I'm just asking if anybody's got any questions. Being none, may I have a motion to approve item number six, not requiring a landscape up against the building?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Duarkesh?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. May I have a motion to approve the plans that have been presented in Graves' comments and their responses?
Close the hearing first.
Okay. May I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Duarkesh?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye, it is a vote. May I have a motion to approve said plan presented before this board with the waivers being granted for the landscaping, both the landscape stamp and the landscape against the building, and that they will replace the sidewalk?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make the, yep.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Duarkesh?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. Else, that, Todd?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the list is applicant Robert Lemansky for GL McKinstry Trust for definitive site subdivision plan for two lot, single-family home development with site improvements on the property located at Clear Drive and Linda Avenue, Auburn, Mass., 01501. They had requested a continuance to our August meeting. May I have a motion to grant this continuance?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Duarkesh?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as a vote, it will be continued to the 12th. Next up on the meeting that isn't on the agenda? Packet Card Farms requesting the release of the residence of 71 Curtis Street, Lot 7, and its existing house from the covenant, which has been accepted by the Planning Board. Does anybody have any questions or problems with that? I believe that the frontage is on Curtis Street. Correct? Ron, do you have any questions?
I'm all set, John. Thank you.
Duarkesh?
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
All right, being no questions, may I have a motion to approve said release of Lot 7 for 71 Curtis Street?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Duarkesh?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. You don't have to say anything, Todd.
If he didn't get up.
It's just your presence, Todd. Just your presence. That's right. You, too. And on their other business, I don't have any for discussion or modification other than what we just discussed. Meeting minutes of 6:14, 2022. May I have a motion to approve as submitted?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Duarkesh?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. There's no new business unforeseen by the Chair. Is there a member Town Planner update?
Yes, couple items. We are still in the search for two new members, an associate member and a full member. Please apply. Use the full board. The other item is, we'll be reorganizing next meeting. Just a heads up. And, yeah, sorry. Two decisions, Duarkesh and Ron, have got two decisions that need signatures for 317 Saltwood Street. One of them is a special permits, there's an appeal period for that, so want to get the signatures as soon as possible, so we can start the appeal period with the town clerk. I will leave those with Rachel. If you can be in this week, that'd be great. I'm off next couple days.
If we're going to reorganize next meeting, can we have everybody present in the building, please? No comments, so.
Yes.
Anybody have any other comments or concerns or questions regarding this meeting? Being none, may I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Duarkesh?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. Myself, John Regan is an aye, it is a vote, the meeting is now adjourned.